United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Take note that all of the board members present with the exception of members of the faculty. She's not feeling good this evening. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Uh huh.
Make sure my member came in, so I get second.
Second.
Second, my member Peter said you have a discussion on that. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I have number four. Student guests from grade six deep portage experience.
We are so privileged to have some of our sixth graders with us tonight and they would like to talk with you, share their experience of deep portage. So who would like to go first? We are so glad your kids are here, honestly. So just all we want you to do is kind of talk about what was the greatest fun that you had. And I know that you brought in some of your projects too that were so impressive at the, at our good showcase. So who would like to go first?
Yes, I'd be, uh, so this past-
Yeah, your name first?
Uh, Jackson Kinnings.
Okay, Jackson Kinnings.
This past January, we went up to deep portage located in Hackensack, Minnesota. We had seven day classes, three night classes. We bumped with three to five people, um. One of the classes that we did was astronomy, uh. That's, of course, my hope, that's what my project and poster was about, um, I guess, yeah.
Probably did. Make me proud time. Present your, present your brother.
Project I did was all planets except Mercury because it fell out. And then my poster, um, for large. Um.
Just summarize it.
Uh, uh.
What did they teach you? Did they teach you about stars?
Well, we pretty much just went out and like, he taught us, not taught us, but like, let us look up in the sky and like see what we could find and like what planets we could see the constellations, like those star constellations of the planets as well, um.
Jackson, do you have a favorite planet?
Hmm.
Boy, there's gonna be a tricky one. Oh, not the same.
Really? Well, I guess Earth, because you have mine.
Great, and so do you think that our sixth graders should go up to deep portage every year?
Yeah, I think it's a great experience.
But made the experience so great?
Uh, it's just having fun with your friends and I guess that's it, I don't know.
Was it a different learning experience than being here at school?
Yeah, you got to learn about a lot of classes. We got to go ice fishing. We did, we learned about astronomy. We did a, like a tower hike and went up to a watchtower to like, um, just get a stand of the area, um. We did this thing where like you get a compass, a, a map and a, um, uh, walkie talkie and you go out on the map and try to find like all the points that are located on the map, um. Um. I can't think of another one off the top of my head, but.
Perfect.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did Charlie and Baez, and my first.
And again, your name?
Chelsea Youngler.
Thank you.
So, and-
You did what?
Charlie and Baez. It's, um, where you go out after you learn how to use a compass, walkie talkie and maps, and you go out and try to find these markers, which is what I did my project for. And when you find the markers, you mark it down and then you find the degree on the compass to the next one until you're timed it up. And yeah. It was really fun because you get different maps, like a little bit of difficulties and there's two different thousand maps. It's probably, I'd say the most memorable class up there because you get to do it by yourself with your friends, instead of having somebody help you the entire time. So, yeah.
So Chelsea, you said that you get to do it by yourself with your friends. So it means that you were like a team out there doing this?
You go in a group of like four to five people, after you learn where everything is and how to do everything. And then you go up there after, they'll, they'll help if you need help because you have your walkie talkie, that you can communicate with them. But yeah, you go out by yourself with your group of friends and follow your map to each marker.
And your, your comment about, do you think this is a trip that our sixth grader should take every year?
Yeah, it was really fun and enjoyable and definitely something a lot of us will remember for a long time, I feel like. And I think everyone had a good time.
What was your favorite class they offered?
Um, probably rock climbing because there's a bunch of different difficulties. And it was just really, because if you're not into the very hard stuff, there's some easy walls. If you want more challenges, harder walls, and then really deep climb climbing.
So the climbing walls were all indoors or, okay, they were all indoors. And about how much of the, how much of your, your trip there were inside classes and outside classes?
So we had about seventy-five percent was outside and about twenty-five percent was inside. In some of the outside classes, you have, you were inside for the first part of instructions and then, yeah.
How were the pizzas?
Good. It didn't matter how it started.
You can probably open that door again. Perfect.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I bet they only two to-
That will do.
Those were our two representatives and do you have any other questions before they head out?
Well, sounds like they had a good time.
And a fun drive. Yeah.
Thank you so much, kids, for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
And Katie, thanks for driving them.
All right, I will move on to open forum. Is there anyone here tonight to address open forum?
Um, and I-
And you are?
Diana Schultz. Um, I just would like to ask that when the policy changes come up or policy reviews come up, that the attendance policy, um, in relation to funerals, uh, sorry, be changed. It was awful, it was absolutely awful that our family had to go through what we did. Um, it was upsetting, it was hard that my kids had to essentially, it was coming down to the nitty gritty of having to choose between their sports teams and participating in that versus attending a funeral. And I think it was, the whole process was, it was stressful, it was awful. And, um, Minnesota State High School League has a funeral policy, there is not a funeral policy. Uh, if you have a funeral in Minnesota State High School League, you're exempt. You can still participate in your event. Um, our school says that for the attendance policy, whether whatever it is about, you have to be in school for four hours. Um, I get that, I understand. I think a funeral, there should be another line. I don't think our kids should have to choose. And I don't, I want it, I don't want anybody else to have to go through feeling like we're down in the wire and being able to participate in the sports stuff. So, um, yeah, so I think there needs to be a change. Make time of that, so. And if you have questions, you can ask, but.
All right, we'll definitely look into that the next time the policy's up for review. Thank you.
Can policies be reviewed at any point in time? If there is a discrepancy or not?
Usually we only do them once a year, but.
Well, that's actually in the handbook, so it's not a policy. It's in the handbook or in the student activity book and stuff.
And there's discrepancies between the activities handbook and the school handbook, like the wording is different in both of those two.
So is this a policy situation or a handbook?
It's a handbook thing, yeah.
Handbook, but school policies for attendance.
Oh boy. Yeah, it's understandable.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, is there anyone else here to address open forum? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to reports. We'll start with our principals, uh, start with you, Ryan.
All right. So the first week in February, February first to the third, I attended the MESSPA Institute. Um, one of the main focuses of the conference was the science of reading. Which is something we've been interested here at the elementary. I attended many sessions on that topic as well as a new principal session, differentiated discipline and improving school culture. February, it's I Love to Read Month. Um, there are many activities our elementary kids were participating in, like buddy reading, reading with flashlight, read with stuffed animal, and then tomorrow it's dressed like your favorite book character. Our student academic showcase took place on February sixteenth. Um, I think it was a huge success. We had over ninety-four percent of our students attend. Um, and many, many positive comments from people who did attend. Um, I sent out a survey in my weekly update. So far, we have about forty people who responded. And I want to say it, it's overwhelming positive feedback. Um, some good ideas and how to improve it if we, we choose to do that in the future. We had our formal dinner and dance pie night, um, on February sixteenth. We had over a hundred sixty people attend. And I want to say a big thank you to all of the student helpers. Um, our seventh grade class was awesome, they were there, um, serving everybody. And I think it was a huge success again, so thank you to Gendros who organizes that. Kindergarten and preschool open house will take place on Thursday, March sixteenth. It's a great opportunity for our current and future students to meet teachers and kind of familiarize themselves with our building. Um, families can also register for both kindergarten and preschool that day. Um, and we'll also send that out on our social media, um, the registration links. STEAM Academy started today. We had sixty-six students sign up to attend. We have two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. These will run on, uh, non-school Mondays for the remainder of the school year, which will be seven in total. And then the end of the third quarter is coming up fast on March twenty-fourth. That's what I have.
Anybody have any questions?
How was the turnout for STEAM today?
Um, I haven't looked at the attendance.
Oh, I just was kind of seeing what.
I believe that when I, when I talked to Mrs. Marshall, um, with the third through sixth graders, she had eight this morning, but sixteen this afternoon. So, you know, with the road conditions, um, some families were driving their children in. Um, and so they chose not to bring their kids here. Um, it, I think it went really well. Um, I was able to catch both groups, um, before, before the first group left and, um, while the second group was here. And it looked like super exciting, um, learning and people were very flexible. Um, you know, along with those road conditions, then, um, there was just a, a little bit of, um, an overlap with the bus. And so the bus, you know, having to go to, um, all these different homes and then the road conditions. And so it should be much, much smoother when we come to next Monday because it is again, um, next Monday, correct, Mr. Kinnings? Okay, so, but everybody was having a great time. And I don't know for sure the numbers that, um, that Mrs. Fadet had. But here's the other thing, we're running Lion Cub Care right along with the STEAM Academy. So if parents, um, that have their children come in for the morning session, if they want their children to stay for the whole day and then ride the bus back home after the second session, that's available to them. And Lion Cub Care had quite a few students in there too. Um, I think there were nine of them when I checked in at about, um, three forty, or excuse me, two forty this afternoon. So, good time. Um, Diana might know a little bit more because she served the food to them. Diana, do you have numbers first?
Uh, the first group was a full thirty, the second group accounted twenty-three heads. Um, so I think they were down like a good seven from what should have been here, so.
All right, any other questions for Ryan? All right, thank you. Sue, what do you got for us?
Yeah, so the first thing is sports, but I'm gonna, I know that Bailey and Cole are gonna talk about, a lot about that. So the only thing I'm gonna mention is something they didn't have in their report. And that is that Bo Hidova is, um, was selected for the all-state academic wrestling team because of, um, his, his performance, but then also academics, you know, with a perfect four-point hole. So that's pretty cool that he's gonna be on that. Um, and then the student academic showcase. Um, we thought as a staff that it was a huge success. So I have a hundred percent of my staff saying that this is something they want to do again next year. Um, they are offering a few suggestions on things that they want to keep the same and a few things that they want to change a little bit differently. But overall, um, you know, like on the night of the showcase, I talked to one of the teachers and I asked how many people or how many conferences did you have last spring? They said five. How many people showed up or how many students and families showed up? And they said over fifty, so they had over fifty students sign up for their, sign into their class to go in and present and show their parents. So huge turnout. So we weren't as high as what the elementary is, but we were at eighty-six percent, um, of the students did show up. So that was really good. And, you know, and at the time when we had some, um, vacations already pre-approved and we also had a few students out with, you know, strep, COVID, things like that, you know. So I mean, you know, we weren't gonna get everyone there. But overall, it was a pretty good, pretty good night and so the staff was very pleased with it. Um, student testing is coming around the corner, so the beginning of March, we'll have the ACT. We have seventeen kids that are signed up for the ACT. Um, and then the MCA and MTAS, that's coming up. We have our new, our schedule kind of finalized for the elementary and for the high school. And so that'll get on the website just to make sure that we have parents and students knowing when to be here for the test. It's always best if they're here along with their classmates doing the test. And so, um, we'll get that schedule finalized and out to everyone. This year, we're gonna run it pretty much the same way we did last year. In the past, we used to like break it up into smaller sections and they would do the math test, you know, for two or three days. Then they would do the reading test for two or three days. Last year, we kind of did a longer chunk on the same day. So it was like they came in, they did the math, they got it done and then they went on. You know, if we noticed a kid was like struggling or just having a rough time, not feeling very well, things like that, then we would, um, uh, shut down their test and have them resume some other day. And so we do have, we still have that option to do that, but it's kind of nice to not know you're gonna be testing for a week. You know, so, um, and I think our, our, well, definitely our MCAs, you know, did a little bit better last year. And so we're kind of hoping that if we continue to try it again, we want to see if maybe that makes a little bit of a difference. Um, our third quarter reward for PBIS, um, is gonna be on March seventeenth for the senior high or the, the high school, the secondary. So on March seventeenth, we're gonna go see a movie and that's gonna be for all of the students that are passing their classes. So that's all we're asking is that you're passing all of your classes, then you get to have the reward. And so we're doing that for the responsibility of making sure your work is done, taking ownership for your own grades and then of course achievement and, you know, being able to celebrate when we are passing all of our classes. So that'll be a fun day. We do have credit recovery starting and so right now we have five students that have signed up. And then I know, um, Ms. Deflevnik was gonna be making some more phone calls, sending out some more emails to try and get a few more students to attend that. But we always try and do a, you know, winter slash spring credit recovery. And then of course, we have some in the summertime too. But this, this one here is a good time to help any students, especially seniors, to make sure that they get that credit recovered before graduation. We had lots of trancing meetings last week with, um, parents and students. And then we'll have some more this next week in the high school, so we've been working on that. That's always a good opportunity to talk to students and parents and make sure that they understand, you know, what the rules are and then also try and problem solve, you know, if we can come up with some solutions, so. And they're always good meetings. And then, um, Ms. Deflevnik and myself have been working on the twenty-three, twenty-four course schedule, looking at which courses we need to make sure that we have next year, which ones we should move to every other year just because, um, the attendance is too low if we have, if we offer them every year. So we're looking at that and our, um, the ITV courses that we're gonna be offering next year. So we're just starting that right now. Um, I did attend the MASPP conference, so that's the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. And so they had some really good conferences. One of them was on, um, one of them was on principals and special education and how to make sure that you kind of avoid conflicts so that you don't have any, um, hearings or anything that, that come about with that. But then they also talked, um, there was one on school counselors and social workers and how to use them in the class in the school building. There was one with, um, the relationship between schools and SROs and when to have SROs step in and when to make sure that they don't step in. So, um, there was a really good conference on that. And then of course, we had the Commissioner of Education and Governor Walz, um, both spoke to the group. So there was some really good information on that also. And then evaluation, second round is done and the third round should be starting pretty soon because in March, that's when we'll start working on, um, any renewals, non-renewals, things like that, so recommendations. So that's coming up here pretty soon.
All right.
Any questions on any of it?
I don't got nothing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sounds like you're busy.
Yeah, it is.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, Superintendent Feldschrein.
My first item is going to be the showcase. And just again, to reiterate, um, how successful we believed the showcase was with our internal staff. Um, and, and it takes, it takes so many different people to make sure that it, um, is successful. So we thank all of the, all of the people that-
So we thank all of the, all of the people that worked that day, um, right alongside of administration and to make sure that it was, um, well-received. And that's what, it was very well-received by, by people that were here in attendance. And, um, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Davis is the one who said after the school day was done, um, smiles. Just smiles, smiles. Everywhere you looked, there were smiles. People were so pleased. Um, I went into, um, basically every classroom. Um, and one of the things that, um, a parent, or excuse me, a teacher wanted to make sure that I heard was that parents, um, were so proud of their kids, um, at that elementary level and especially, and, and, um, basically brought tears, um, to, to that, that feeling of pride. And their, their young student being able to speak and present in front of them and in front of other guests in our building. So, um, we, we just, we believe that it was a great success. The second thing I wanted to share is it's been really busy here with referendum items. And with the, the work that's been done internally, um, I did reach out to Ingenza and asked if they would be able to come and present, um, the updates on everything that's been discussed with the architect and with, um, staff here at school, um, and showing us, um, architectural designs and just everything. I did ask them if they could come on March sixth because that's usually a date that you would have open for us and, um, they can't. So if we can look at our calendars and see if there's another night, um, that week that we could have them come in and present for, maybe it'd take at least a half hour with the work that's been done. So we were, we've covered, um, the pool, the, um, the secured entrances, the, um, somewhat, um, a bit of the track, um, also the, um, media center renovation. So, um, oh, and bleachers. So we've really been working around, um, all of those different areas and want to be able to bring you, um, the work that's been done up to this point so that you also have that input on, hey, this looks really great, or you know what, we better, um, make some changes. So it's, um, we're in that development or design stage is what they would say. So hopefully we can make that happen. All right, um, been really busy with interviews, you know, with the, with the business manager position and also then with the payroll, um, position. So, um, that interview process and checking references and communicating everything, um, with our interview team has, has taken time. And, um, we're very pleased to hopefully be able to bring that next piece of the business office, to a little bit more closure, um, tonight. Um, want you to also know that the amendments to our ESER money, we're waiting for final approval from Minnesota Department of Education to say, yep, it was okay to change, um, some of those items around. Um, and then, um, and then we'll move forward with those as well. And the, the two big ones right now that needed to have, um, specific, um, in permission are the, um, climbing wall, the Travis climbing wall and the, um, and the, the assistance with our health insurance for our employees. So both of those had to go through a, a full process in order to, um, to make that happen at the state. So just waiting back for, for that information. The bus driver appreciation day was last Tuesday. And we were able to have most of our drivers come in and into the main office and just visit with us and, um, have some coffee, hot chocolate, a roll, um, receive a few little gifts. And I'd like to thank, um, Corinne, um, Anderson for picking up the rolls from the, uh, famous Blue Egg Bakery in Elk River. And she did that on her way, um, to school. Suzie, it was last Wednesday that we, we did that. And then, um, um, also Mrs. Davis. And that was, um, she always has great things that can be given as gifts to people. And so she, um, helped with making sure our bus drivers received something, um, for the taking on their way out. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, and I hope that's, it's on this message right here. We had our big bus inspection, um, took place during the day today. Um, and I asked Mr. Sher to give us the inspection results. Uh, went good. One bus had a window sticker, um, that the kids picked the letters off. And so, um, it, um, it was a spare bus. And so part of the, the number nine on the bus needs to be, um, needs to be repaired, put back on. All the vans, all the vans, all the regular buses and all the spares but one are all in service and passed everything. And nine will be fixed in the morning, bus number nine. Okay, so bus nine is the only one that had any, any issues. And so that is, um, awesome when we can have our transportation, um, department passing the, the safety inspections each year. And then, um, lastly, I would like to share that, um, if you weren't aware, that February is the month that, um, we recognize and celebrate and thank all of our, our school board members. And so I have certificates for you and we're going to take a couple of minutes to have you post for a photo, receive your certificates, and then we'll have your, um, celebratory cake also tonight. So please, um, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Penix, would you pass these out for me? And then if you would please, um, gather on that nice orange ball back there where we're taking lots of rolls.
Oh, you know what? That was, that was for all of us. We're just so great. Better come up with something for March.
Right?
Okay, shirt on the two ends, collar in the middle, right over here. And the middle person, we have two, four, six, seven, so the middle person is going to hold the cake.
Oh, you're gonna hold your certificate and I can get the same card.
She, she doesn't.
Oh, you're exempt. Because where's the sparklers?
I think we're good. Not a huge fan.
All right, let's have, um.
When you get closer, you can.
Yep, let's, Cory, if you'll just come, yes, if you turn sideways a little bit, that will work great. Okay, one, two, three. I gotta come on a little closer. Cole, you just pull that chair out and Cory, will you pull that chair out for me? Thank you. And one more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you very much. And thank you for being school board members and for all that work that you do every single day for the students of our district. Are there any questions about my report?
Okay, okay. So since you touched on it, um, did we pay out the health insurance yet for, with the ESER and the levy fund?
No, we have to wait for that approval, which there should be no problem with the approval. It's just, it takes time. And then when I've talked to the MTE representative, he said, then there's, you can go back. You can go back. So there's not going to be any issue with, um, a levy.
Did we figure out what the final dollar amount was?
I don't know for sure if the business office has figured that out or not.
Okay.
So I can give that to you when we've got that, that information. I mean, they probably know, I just haven't asked for that exact dollar amount.
Okay.
So did we do this without being one-hundred percent certain that we had the money?
No, no, because I was, I was already given the guarantee that it would fit underneath of the ESER funding by the man that does the approval and, um, and actually guided me through that, that process. So I, there's no issue.
Do we have a date in mind based on when, how long the approval will take?
No.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it should be coming this week.
Okay.
And I'll let you know as soon as it's here.
But, so how does that work with your health insurance then?
So we pay the bills and then we get reimbursement back from the state. And that's how everything in our district with the finances works. You pay your, your invoices and then you do what's called a draw on your title or your, whatever, your grant funds. And then you just do that draw, the business office does that, and then the money is reimbursed to the district.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else for Kathy? For right now? All right, Eric, no more. Uh, move on to board members. Any board members have any in your question name?
Okay, I will. Uh, I attended, uh, officer training, um, at the beginning of the month. First and eighth, I believe it was, and, uh, it was a good experience. The best part that I liked about it, and I wish everybody would have done it, is that, um, the first session actually went over, um, what we do here upfront. It went over the general rules, basically Robert's rules. It went over the whole idea of what we're doing, what we can do, what we can't do. It was a, um, it was a nice, uh, open forum, roundtable discussion on certain situations, certain things, what, you know. Because you're looking at the entire state of school districts. So at least you get a broad arrangement of different sizes of school districts. So you're able to, um, get different viewpoints on things. So it was good to, uh, it was good to attend that. It was good to get the treasurer training in. There was, uh, a lot of information because I'm not a treasurer. So it would be, it was good to, uh, talk about it and see what it's all about and what happens with it. And we got a compliment. Cindy Stolt, uh, a neighboring district, um, gave a, she couldn't even click the microphone button fast enough to give kudos to our ECFD department. She wanted to make certain that I was aware of that and that, uh, I should pass that on to our district. And so I am doing that now that, uh, she was very, uh, congratulatory of, uh, what we have here in our district for our ECFD department. So, um, other than that, uh, I don't have anything else.
All right, I just got a few things. Uh, on February ninth, we had a meeting to sell bonds for the school project. That went really well. We had a better interest rate than we thought we were gonna. So that should create some more revenue for us. And, uh, myself, Nate and Cory sat in on the payroll interviews for the last few weeks. I think that went pretty well. Only other thing, it was February thirteenth, we had a meeting, confer meeting with teachers. A few very good topics we brought up.
It was that.
So I'm glad we did that.
It was a good discussion to have with them because, uh, it's been a little bit since we've had a discussion with them. And I believe that we need to have more discussions with them so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that's all I got. Uh, any other board members? All right, I will move on to student school board members. We'll start with Cole.
All right. So our boys basketball are coming, they're coming off a hard, hard-fought game last Friday. Got a little scrap at the end, but unfortunately we couldn't pull off the win. This week is our final week of the regular season and we have our parents' night and senior night tomorrow against Florida. And then next week, we'll start playoffs. Our student council had our snow week, which is basically similar to a homecoming week because during the winter months, that ran from February seventh to tenth. And on February eighth, which was the Wednesday, we had a small winter pet fest that ran at seven o'clock in the gym. And most students thought this was fun and they enjoyed it. They recommend it for future years. And then that Saturday, we had our high school winter formal. And it was a big success from everyone I've talked to. Everyone had a great time, great DJ, great food. And I'd like to give a big thanks to everyone that helped make that possible. Kitchen staff, chaperones, custodial staff. We even had our junior high middle-level members, some of them in attendance, have served. And so that was a good experience for them. For our NHS, we currently don't have a ton planned, but on March twenty-fourth, we have an upcoming blood drive that NHS will be hosting. And at the student showcase, a few members of NHS were displaying a trifle board. And for people, when they came by, they would explain what NHS is to, uh, community members. I'm not gonna mention much about the showcase since it's been mentioned quite a bit. Um, but there was, I feel like, a little bit of disagreement or kind of a miscommunication, I like, through the board about what the role of a full-time PSEO student would do at the showcase. I know, like, it was thought that they could do organizations like student council and NHS, but I just bring up the idea of what if they're not in any, in their full-time PSEO? And what, what exactly are they supposed to be doing?
And to add to that, I mean, if you're full-time, technically, you, you don't have to be in the building.
It's, yeah, it felt like it was a bit of a confusing for them. They didn't really know what they were supposed to do. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Could I interject something too? Um, and that is, um, PSEO students are OBOE students first. And, and the reason why we have our, our ECO code and we have the program that we're offering as services to the, to US students is because we want you to have the best of everything. We want you to be able to be involved in all of our extracurricular activities, like most PSEO kids are involved in different activities at school. We want to make sure that we're providing you a place to be able to, you know, take care of your academics. Um, you know, your, your classes, whether it's combined classes, shared classes, where you have some here at school, um, with our teachers at the high school level or taking them from, from post-secondary. So, um, it's, it's really important to us that everybody is involved. Um, and definitely I agree that we, um, we needed to do something a little bit differently than, um, how it was communicated with you. And so if you guys have ideas, um, please do share. I honestly, um, in talking with a couple of parents, I thought it'd be wonderful if the ECO code was open as again, one of those stations and parents could come in and have PSEO students talk about your experiences as PSEO OBOE students and maybe show, um, some of how you log into the post-secondary institutions and your work and maybe show an essay or something like that. So, so thank you very much for sharing that because that is one area that we want to make sure and do a better job, a much better job, um, as we continue to move forward with it. Thank you.
So Cole, what was expected of you there?
Well, for me, I had, I'm in extracurricular activities, so I, what did I do? I think I, I worked a coffee shop for student council. So then if people wanted coffee, I was working it. I, I have two in-person, three in-person classes. I have chemistry, uh, pre-calculus and, um, band. And last semester, I had an economics class. So I was able to show something from last semester which carry over. So that did help. And then my other one might have been, uh, I had to, the way I did it is for, um, Ms. Deflomenek, our counselor, I went and basically just showed her my grades and that counted as a signature. So I don't know if that's exactly what's expected, but that's what was offered for, um, PSEO students.
Yeah, that was for full-time PSEO. They only needed one signature. And so the catch-all was they had to show their grades, their current grades, which they, you guys have to do that quite often anyways, don't you?
Like monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah, yeah. And so then that way.
I had other options that I could have done.
Yes, yeah.
My final thing I'll mention is our musical production is going quite well. We've had a few stumbles with snow days and all that jazz. But, uh, overall, it's been a good production and everyone's pretty happy with where we are right now. And our building construction has just started building the set. So that's gonna help really get things moving along. So we're all pretty happy for how it's just been so far. That's all I have.
Questions for Cole on any? All right, thank you. All right, Bailey?
Okay, well, since we're on the showcase kick, I'll give mine to you, send. Wonderful idea. I loved it. I definitely think we should do this in the future. But, um, I just felt like it's poorly planned for PSEO students and you took the words right out of my mouth. Like the ECO code could have been open just to, I mean, showcase that. Like you mentioned, yes, for OBOE students first too, but I feel like people don't realize how much this is benefiting our future. Like you mentioned, yes, for OBOE students first too, but I feel like people don't realize how much this is benefiting our future. So I think it's important to, like, show that too. And, uh, I think there's three emails sent out to us. One was like the generic one that everybody got and then I think we got two, one was like the day before. And so it was just like, kinda like a last minute scramble, cause like originally I thought, oh, like I'm full-time PSEO, I don't have to do anything, like I'll just come in, do my normal classwork. But then once it started to get down to it, I'm like, oh no, like that's not the case at all. And then you mentioned that we only get one signature. That's actually the first I just heard about this, cause I had three and I was like, I don't know what I'm gonna do for these three. So I guess just for future, maybe like plan ahead with that a little bit more, but otherwise I think it was a wonderful idea. And then it was brought to my attention, the lunch, um, somebody mentioned that students were reimbursed cause it was supposed to be free, correct? But then I noticed and from a couple of my peers that students were charged for this lunch. So I guess there's just a little confusion on that whole deal.
Can you speak to that too, Mr. Chair?
Oh. Cause I worked with Linda on that, so they did get charged first, I think that's how they tracked the account, then they got reimbursed.
Okay.
And the reimbursement just went through at the last week.
The reason why we needed to do the tracking is because the cost of the meals were all different. And so if it's a student that is an elementary student, that meal was a different cost than a student that was, uh, like a fourth, fifth, sixth grade student versus a, um, high school student. And so that, the tracking was right in. There were students that came up and wanted to have a second meal. They were given that second meal and then because they were already charged, once then there was a tally chart that was being used so that we knew exactly how many meals were being, were being served that day. And so all, anybody that was, um, that was tracked, I mean, any, all the accounts were reimbursed, so no one paid anything for their meal. That was a free meal, that's how we advertised it, that's how it was, was done. Um, and the other piece to, to know is that, um, the food that was served that night, that is not with district funds. Um, so we use donations that come into our district, um, to pay for those special events like that. And so it was truly a free meal to every guest that, that ate that night and it didn't cost the district any funding at all. Thank you for letting me say that.
I just wanna clarify, cause I know I had a couple of people ask you about that. And then to move on to girls' basketball, we finished our regular season last Saturday. It was a makeup game due to the weather. We celebrated parents' night and we played holding court. We lost, but, um, this week we'll be going on to playoffs. And we play East Central on Thursday and we have a home game, so this is it, you know? You lose, you're done, so I hope we can go a little far. And then wrestling, they had the section tournament, which was held in Staples Motley last Friday. Um, the two that are moving on are Landon Halverson and Bo Hidoba. The tournament is at the Excel and they'll be wrestling at Friday, but the times are to be determined yet. And then Landon Halverson also got his hundredth win, so congrats to him. And then the speech meet, or the speech team had a meet in Princeton on Saturday. And then I talked to Natalie DeVito and she says, "The season has been fun and speech is inspiring of people to do new things." And I think that goes to show what the new members they've had this year, um, it's really grown. So that's kind of unique because to be honest, until this year, I didn't really know much about speech because I feel like it's forgotten. And then a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with the food shelf and, um, they're actually don't, or raising the budget that we get for the backpack program, so I thought that was like important information to share with you guys.
Very.
And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other questions or anything for Bailey? All right, with that, we'll move on to other district employees. You got something for us, Paul?
Yeah, a little story tell.
All right.
So, not gonna talk about the referendum, I'm only gonna talk with you about the work.
About the what?
The work, some of the junk. But first, so remember we did the trips down the hallway? And we talked about the roof leak? You can see the water came down and before the breaker finally blew, it did this. Um, so we re-diverted the water and that's the best we could do right now to keep it from going. It went right on that valve and then just hang a whole bunch of them, the act was dropped. Well, so then, yeah. So, so I, you know, it's literally before that breaker, look how long, look how it did that much before that breaker finally blew.
Where was that from, Paul?
So this is where you go down around the bend and you wanna go to the west gym. So when you, that hallway there where the senior lockers are, and yeah, so then what that did is that broker, that breaker, put out all those lights, so then re-wire things so that it didn't affect this particular one anymore. And then, um, cause where, what's happening is the water's following up in that area is pre-cast sections of concrete. So the water's following the pre-cast section, but who knows where it's coming from, that's the hard part. It's coming from somewhere and then following that and then it's finally coming to this, following on that. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's never easy. It's never direct like, hey, it's dripping right here. And I was on the roof last week doing a motor change. And what's happening is, so the snow that just came is like this up there. And then there's another layer like this. So right now the snow's this high up there and I go around, I check that all the vents are, where'd you think? But I'm worried because where those drains are, they're open, but where's it gonna go? So I don't, I think we need to talk maybe to gents a little bit and see if they have some ideas about, you know, literally I'm envisioning pumps up there, spring, some, cause it's, there's a lot of snow up there, so, you know, I don't.
Snow blowers out.
Well, and I saw people took pictures of their houses in the snow. You couldn't, it was up above the doors going out, all these west doors, cause it goes across the drip and then it lays down. And, uh, but my worry was just being up there. And that layer that's down here, it's frozen, so, yeah, it is. So there's my concern about that, but, um, so the rest of what I have to talk about is just about the pool and the process. So the first thing they do, passes around, is they, they chip away the plaster, which is that. But if you look on the backside, see that chunk of concrete? That's a weak spot, and I like it, they were working on their teeth. Um, so they marked those weak spots so that they strengthened them back up with the concrete again. And, um, like if you walk in the pool right now, there's a big square like this and that's been chipped out because they did those soundings I'm talking about where they run a chain along the ground and they gear for weak spots. So if you went in there, you would see that. Then, uh, you can see this was the lane tile, it was this black color. And the coaches and, uh, this is the other non-St. Bryce is to go with blue. And, uh, Sarah Miller and Emily, they like this and so they, I talked to, I know three, four isn't a lot, but I talked to some of the swimmers, the competitive swimmers, that they liked the blue because of the fact that this was easier to see than the white. So, um, they're not at that point yet. They just had to make sure they got it on order and they brought some in. So what they do is they chipped off, you can see they chiseled all this old tile. And when they, and they're doing it all with, you saw that equipment, didn't you? It's all like hand five-down buckets, they pull it out, they walk up out of the deck, they go outside and they dump it. And then go back in, another five-down, it is not anything, it's very laborious. Um, but when they take that out, there's this little bit of layer that they have to fill so it's smooth. So what they've been doing today is, you can see where they were, they've had these laid out and then they're screening material across to make it smooth. And then you can see this. It's like, um, it's like what you see that I passed around. And it's almost like it gets a roughness like stucco and then the smooth plaster will go over this. So that's where they're kind of at with it. And they're on schedule, nothing are shattering. I know the first thing people are wondering, nothing like, oh my God, this is gonna cost us a thousand dollars all of a sudden, or anything like that. I know that's supposed to be the first thing that everybody wonders. So, but I thought you'd at least like to see what they're doing. The gutters have been cleaned, but have not been coated or anything. Um, so next steps is just to keep, huh, chipping away at it. Sorry. Okay, there you go.
Hey Paul, can you share about, um, what they had to do to actually completely drain the pool with the pipes?
Oh, so because of the high water table, you walk down there where the drain tile are, there's, the PVC keeps getting taller and taller, cause they're trying to bring the water outside of the pool in the ground, down and down, so that the water doesn't press the sides of the pool and, and collapse on itself. So they're trying to, they were, they were putting pipes in so the water can go up those pipes and the water around the sides of the pool can go over this. So they finally got that to where they're comfortable with it not doing anything to that. So, um, but it took a little while. And then when we, when they get to that point, they will go underneath their double-checks the hydrostatic valves and then, um, bolster up the future that isn't like a problem. And what else was last thing about, well, we were up for ten-year drain covers anyway. So that kind of at least, they will just do that now, but instead of paying a stupid dollar, just, but I'm gonna do it. So that'll happen. And I don't have any updates yet on the filtration system, I'm still got schools calling me. Orno and, and the other one, wanna get into some detailed conversations about, um, filtration systems. If anybody was wondering about that, cause I told you I'd update you, but I'm getting more schools calling, so. Get that info. So, when do you suspect that the water's gonna be put back into the pool? Um, well, we're still on that end of March.
End of March?
Yeah, first week of April into March, something like that.
I just know that we're coming into melting season and the water table could potentially go even yet higher.
Yeah.
Putting the water back in would secure it so it doesn't actually have an issue?
Well, one thing they might be able to do is a little earlier is they'll be dumping with, like, the floor part and they'll be able to add chunks of water. Um, well, because of gutter, maybe we could have water in some of the gutter. So, but that's a good question to ask them. It's been different crews. Um, one, it's just, it's almost like Mr. Specialty Crew comes in and they don't know anything about the other specialty crew. So it's been hard to, they're like, those guys will be here next week, is what I, so. Remember that old movie with Tom being sort of trying to work on a house and they go, two weeks, two weeks? And I asked, maybe I'm aging myself, so.
And the reason I ask Paul to share that is because that was a very, um, very good move on your part to make sure that the vendor was responsible for emptying the pool, to make sure that all those precautions were being taken by the specialty groups that know exactly what needed to happen. So, thank you for that too.
All right, any questions for Paul or anything else?
I have two questions.
Yep.
So the smell that the staff was smelling previously, was that from cleaning the gutters out?
Yeah.
When the pool first got started on their work? So when we finish or seal the drain or the gutters and stuff, will there be more smells going throughout the school?
Oh, I ask because that coating is almost like, uh, uh, I mean, it's gonna be just like any coating, whether it's a water-based or epoxy-based stuff, all of that. And, and when we do that, cause that'd probably be the last thing they're gonna do, to clean that coating down. And then, uh, cause the only other thing, like, I've been told the plastering part is just like doing, uh, insulation, spray foam insulation, it's almost just like they just go and they spray it. And not that, there isn't anything on that. And then, uh, tile work is just your regular tile work, although some of that adhesive in the tile can be a bit of a challenge. So, so yeah, I will ask, if it can be, just like when, uh, when one's his name, uh, starts spraying the fields for the big park and then I get the calls, there's a smell. It's like, no, problem.
Was, uh, were the other lights inspected in that hallway to make sure that we're not having any other issues that?
Yeah, we pulled tile, we went up around, um, because this, it's weird, that area, the water has come down on one student's locker all the time, that's normally what happens, right where the main closet is. But as, like, as you guys know, when the snow melts, you get a ridge, all the water diverts. And so I think, like I said, I think it's diverted somewhere up there and it had to come down and come across. And then the next day, where's it going? Door inching. That's, that's what's hard.
What do we normally do in the winter time? Does the snow normally melt off the roof? Do you have to shovel it? What do we, just leave it?
Yeah, the only thing I've ever, and I wasn't here for it, I think Kathy was here for it, where it blew off the cover in the back, cause it, it, all those drains that are along the roof. See, some schools have it where it comes out the sides, we don't have that. We have, uh, drains all over and all that stuff is diverted out back there. And what's happened in the past is those dry wells have filled up and literally had nowhere to go and, uh, blew the cover up and things. Um, but I've thought about, do you try to go up there and, I know, I don't know, one of the guys told me one time, they actually hoisted a snow blower up there. I thought Steve Malka told me that one time, they actually took the snow blower out there. Um, but I don't know if it was because of what you're talking about or if it was just that it got so drifted. Because, I mean, the weather's been nice enough where it's been slowly going, it's just turned into a hard path. So I would be more concerned if we start getting like three sixty-degree days, just an anomaly and all of a sudden it's like boom, boom, boom. Um, then I'd get, then I'd get nervous. So, that's about it.
Does this, uh, does this roof have, well, roof drains too or not? So, two drains side by side or is there only one in every spot?
There's one, there's one spot where there's like two on this end, so maybe it's in a couple of spots. Most of them are just one, you know, just one at each.
Okay.
At each jump break where the roof goes like, like that, there's, there's, when there is one, it's, yeah, just the one and then another one. So, and it must not be, can't be too bad if there are all, all the bathroom vents were all, you know, all the way through, nothing was covered. So, so that's a good sign, but, um, I didn't fall into any holes, so, didn't want to. It's pretty deep up there, the directing is just, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, uh, any other district employees, do anything for that? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve item seven, A, B, and C.
So.
Motion by member Heinz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Schroder, discussion needed on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes unanimously. All right, I will move on to item eight, personnel. All right, we'll do item eight, aid first. Can I get a motion for the FM LALE approximately March eighth through May first, two thousand twenty-three? So, all right, motion by member Peterson, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Heinz, uh, discussion on that? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. And motion passes unanimously. All right, item eight, B, can I get a motion to approve David Nichols' long-term substitute from approximately March eighth through May first, two thousand twenty-three?
Smoke.
Motion by member, uh, Canning, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Peterson, uh, discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on to, uh, eight, C. I get a motion to approve, uh, spring sports activities. Mercy baseball, Benji Vesser, assistant baseball, Seth Gams, assistant softball, Pam Nichols, junior high softball, Lori McElroy, and musical technical director, fifty percent, Jesse DeYoung.
Smoke.
My, uh, member Canning, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Heinz, discussion needed on that? Hearing none, uh.
I didn't have a question. Do we have a, um, I see that we have an assistant softball coach, do we have a Mercy softball coach?
Yeah, we hired.
We did that already.
She was here, Stephanie.
She was Stephanie.
I think she was sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
That's, yes. I thought we did it already, but I just wanted to know.
Yes, Stephanie Patton.
Okay.
Yep.
And she was already approved.
Yep.
Okay.
The other one that's already approved is Lori Holman for track, head track.
That's right, we did those together. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to, uh, action items.
Oh, let's go to eight.
Good catch, thanks, Mary. All right, move on to item eight B. Motion to approve Terry Belshine, District Elementary Secretary resignation effective two twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. So, motion by member Peterson, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Schroeder, discussion on that?
Uh, do we want to do these in this order?
You have to.
You have to, because she would have to resign before you're hired.
The, the resignation is pending, um, pending the other position.
Any other discussion needed on that resignation? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item eight B. Motion to approve Terry Belshine, Business Office Assistant Payroll Position effective three, one, two thousand twenty-three.
So.
Motion by member Heinz, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Peterson, discussion on that?
I'm gonna grumble just a little bit. I would appreciate information before the day of our meeting, so we go over it. That's, I, I just received this this morning, so, I mean, that's, that's my little jab, is I, I just would appreciate instead of waiting just for the meeting to get the information.
Would anybody from the interview team like to, um, respond to member Peterson?
Sorry, is one information, I guess, one, the information that was presented to us, basically who the position was being.
That, and the wages and, and all that. I mean, just the, the exact information we have right here.
Which, and actually, the wages, I just seen that tonight, too.
Right.
So, the interview team didn't even have that.
No, but I'm just requesting that we have information before this, so we can go over
As far as who is being offered the position, that's just getting voted on the weekend, right?
Correct.
Monday or weekend, when that was decided, so.
So, I saw.
Well, and actually, I'd push to have it on this agenda, rather than waiting until.
So you're saying the decision was made this weekend, in a committee hearing?
Yeah, we had been having interviews, but the final decision wasn't made until, probably Monday. Am I correct on that?
Today is Monday.
Or this morning, then?
It was today.
Because we're waiting for some background information from some other candidates to be verified, so, um, so, I guess, I guess I'm partially playing my part, just because I said, put it on this agenda.
This wasn't a finger point.
Well, no, no, I just, I mean, I agree, though, we do normally like the information on that, so, yes.
Okay, the posting was listed, was open for quite a while. Did we receive applications after that initial interview run that we did? Did we have, you know, between the time that it closed, did we interview those people also?
No, because the, um, there was one, one application that came in during the evening when we were actually interviewing, and then the other one came in, oh, I think maybe just last week, and the, the interview team was already in the process of working with the five applicants that they interviewed.
So if we didn't intend on interviewing anybody after our initial set of interviews, why didn't we take that posting down? Because now we've got two applications that we didn't review, we didn't interview them, and we've just shut it down and?
Out of fair shape.
And I made personal telephone calls to both of the people to share with them that the interviews had already taken place.
So again, why wasn't that, that posting pulled down, though? If you only intended on doing one round of interviewing?
There was never any indication that we were only going to do one round of interviewing.
So then why wouldn't you interview the other two people? It, it doesn't matter if an application came in during the interviews and came in afterwards, you still received two more applications, and if they were even remotely qualified, why wouldn't we interview them as well? Just to make sure that we were choosing the best candidate for the position with the applications that were presented to us?
Because the interview team had already decided on their top three, and we were processing those top three candidates. And so there was no need to bring in more people, because the team had already interviewed five candidates and had made selections. But because it hadn't been filled, and so it was not actually, um, shared until tonight, then the posting did remain open.
So is this how we always do it? Do we interview and leave the posting open?
This is the quickest interview process we've had for a long time.
So if this isn't normally how we do it, then why don't we do this the same way that we always do?
Because, I, Casey, I'm going to ask that you, um, please ask fellow board members that were on the interview, interviewing team for that, that information.
So it was a group decision between everyone on the committee that we weren't going to interview the two additional applications that we got, or take the posting down, because the decision?
It was nev, that was never discussed. It was never discussed, because the interviewing that had already taken place was basically a completion of the process at that point.
What I'm asking is if that's how you felt about that, and that's the general consensus of everyone in the interviewing, um, committee, why didn't we pull the listing down then, so we didn't receive any additional applications?
Sorry, if, I guess it's my error, then, we'll take it down next time, so sorry. It's because we didn't have, um, a person in that position yet. So if the committee, if the committee would have said, let's interview those other two candidates, then we could have done that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any other discussion on that one?
As far as the information that was sent to you, do you want that altered?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's the discussion that should take place, or should take place next then.
So what are we gonna alter out of that info? I guess, one more, please. Question I have is, so, being that this is a new and different position for this person, I believe that, uh, in all fairness, that person should, should, uh, probably start out at what they're making, being that the person that left is making less. Does that make sense?
I guess.
Please.
And I know what you're, you're going with here. My question is, what was the payroll salary, our previous one?
It's all worth it. It's right here, it's in here.
So why are we paying three dollars and, oh, well, two dollars and twenty-two cents an hour more to the new payroll person than we were the previous one?
Because of the, the, the people themselves. You have one employee that is a six-year employee, and you have another employee that's a sixteen-year employee. So the sixteen-year, the sixteen-year, um, employee was already making more than the payroll position.
So I guess, is that what you're getting, wondering why?
Well, I, my, my question, or my statement to that would be, well, the new business manager would get a pay increase due to the fact of the, um, position itself. It's a managerial position. It should be definitely an increase in pay from where she came from. I'm not quite understanding where we're going with, with a two dollar and ninety cent raise on that.
Looking for consistency. So if you have one person that's, um, in your payroll department, that's, um, that was increased by thirty-three percent of the current, of the current pay, um, then, and this, the, what the figures are that I presented to you would be that the other new addition of the person that's been here sixteen years would be fifteen percent increase, less than half of what you've already, um, agreed to for, for the other position, and they're both in new positions. But if you believe it needs to be changed, then you change it.
I think, I think the problem is we're not comparing apples to apples.
No, we are not, this is a managerial position.
I think that's a whole discrepancy here. With putting in the thirty-three percent for the business manager, I don't even know that that information needs to be in there.
No, it doesn't. That's, that, that's a completely separate position, and it has nothing to correlate to with this. That was, this is individually based.
So what are we gonna have in the contract?
Can we be doing that?
No.
We really shouldn't.
It shouldn't be.
I don't agree with.
The question's brought up is why are, are you negotiating Terry's wage as a contract to managers? That's what was asked.
Okay, I negotiated, I negotiated our new business manager's wage.
But that person is not related to you. That's my issue that we're doing right now.
All right.
And that, I, I mean, no offense, I just am trying to protect the district, protect you, and protect this new position from anything outside of this room, or anything being construed as anything other than what it is. I think that if we're gonna do this, perhaps Brooke should come in here and have this discussion with us, as opposed to, you two are very directly connected to each other, and I don't think we should, I don't think we should be doing that. What do you guys think?
I one hundred percent agree with you.
Well, and, let's be, uh, I just want to be upfront with this, during the selection process, Kathy bowed out of it.
She did bow out, correct. Yep, she had nothing to do with this election on the.
Higher, so, I just wanted to be aware of that.
Let's talk about this nepotism for just a second, and because it probably should be made public. Um, the nepotism, um, this has been shared once, once before. Dan Belshine was your bus driver for thirty-four years. He worked in the district and was hired far earlier than I came into the picture. Terry has worked for the district for sixteen years. She was already here for many years before I came into the picture as your, your superintendent. Um, you have another Belshine that is a coach, that was a coach before I came into the, the picture as your, your superintendent. Those people have already, um, shared, um, shared their, um, showed their skills and their responsibilities and dedication and loyalty to the district. So, um, you know, if that's, if that's what you want to do with this, and, and I'm, I'm fine with that, I was just trying to be consistent and to show you where you were at with your business office, um, hiring. Um, I, I do believe, though, that, um, it would not be, um, it would not be right for this employee to take a pay cut. And if you're going to compare to what the current, what the past payroll person had, that would be a pay cut, and I, I would hope that you would, um, you would take a look at that.
Kathy, we're not sitting here, we're not recommending a pay cut whatsoever.
Okay.
No, we're just trying to justify the fifteen percent raise.
And I'm also just trying to protect you.
We're not questioning the loyalty of the.
In the district as a whole. I don't think that this should be happening with you.
Okay.
The other people, I wasn't on the board, and I don't know that any of us were on the board when your husband retired. And I would have hoped that that board would have asked for something else, if there was something else going on. We can't look backwards, we're looking at right now, and right now, that is a direct relation to you, and I don't think it's appropriate, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, I don't think it's appropriate that we sit here and talk about pay with you.
Okay, so.
No offense to you.
All right, so here's, here's the thing, we have a resignation that has already been accepted, and we have a verbal agreement to be the Business Office Assistant Payroll, and it's dependent on the contract. So, um, tomorrow, we have, we still have our district secretary, and so then we're going to be moving into that new position, um, pending that, that contract being accepted by the individual. And so, um, I'm going to relay this back to you then, um, and I want you to know, none of this was discussed with, um, with the individual either. What I did is I pulled out, I pulled out what was brought before us for the, um, the negotiations, the last go-around, and I also looked at, um, the, the salaries of the people that are, you know, in the, the business office also. So, um, so, that's, that's fine, that's, that's better than I don't have to, um, I don't have to be involved with it, and I appreciate, um, me not being involved with it, so that there isn't an issue of nepotism, so that we're protecting all of those other people.
Thank you.
So, so, um, do you have somebody that's going to be, um, basically negotiating or coming up with that figure for, for that employee?
Well, what I'm, what I would suggest, and this is just, let's have a conversation about it, is that continuing the employee as, or, if we can come up with a number, either continuing the employee as is, uh, during their current pay, or if you would like to increase it a, a small percentage, that would be fine. And then once the probationary period is over, then we could have a negotiation process.
Well, and I think we need to amend our, I think that we need to amend this approval then, because the, the approval of the employee is set based off of what we were emailed, is it not?
No, it's not, because there was some conversation about the contract details.
Correct. This was, this was suggested, and it was not contractual at this point in time.
So can we, do we need to amend it then, and word it as a partial to what is being requested? Because it's, if it's contingent on the contract, how does that work, Kathy?
I, I would say that what you've already, what you, the, the motion that's on the table is fine. Um, but then you need to, with that motion, designate who and how, um, the salary part, because the salary part is the only thing that would change with the contract. Everything else would stay in place as was, you know, shared through the email. So decide, um, how you're going to, um, how you're going to, um, share that, the salary amount.
And isn't, um, just, again, a conversation, isn't, isn't every person we hire generally dependent upon a contract approval? Most, most of them?
But don't we usually have their, their income and salary hammered out before, or at the time of?
That's the difference.
Yeah, that's what I'm struggling with as approval.
Usually it's either the same contract as the previous employee's spot, or it's already been figured out.
Right.
So why don't you just, why don't you decide right now what that dollar amount's going to be, so that it's part of the, part of the motion?
Right.
Yep, so, talk, talk and decide what you think it should be, and, and go with it.
Should I enter it right now?
Five percent? Ninety, uh, ninety-six cents? Yeah, whatever that would be, yes. That would be plenty. Yep, a buck. Whatever that percentage comes up to be.
I'm taking a couple notes quickly for it.
That's the, that's the start of it.
That's the start of it.
Until they go to Asia.
After the ninety D.
Until the end of June, we're gonna redo this contract, this, something.
That'll be coming, yeah.
This will be through the end of June. This will be through the end of June.
Because this is already at and above what we were doing existing.
It can be negotiated then, and then we'll also have some input from the business managers. So it can be more of a performance-based rate of that type.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that so I can take some notes on what?
Josh, I would go 5%. Shall I decide 5%? So 5% over current wage.
Yep, we're 19.
You get to do that?
So we're going to opt for 5% over current wage.
Yep. For the remainder of the contract. Because this contract expires on June, right, Kathy?
It'd be June 30th, yes. And and it's been requested that the probation period, the evaluations be shared during that June 1st to June 15th before the negotiations occur, and then for the the new contract to be in place by July 1st.
Okay.
And then I'm sorry, the rest of that, did you say then she's going to have a performance evaluation?
Yeah, that's Kathy.
June 1st to June 15th.
Will be her performance evaluation, and then she'll be up for negotiation with everyone else.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so is everyone clear about 5% over current wage? You get good with that? All right. You good with that, Nate? All right, any other discussion needed, yes, before we move on?
Just thank you for that whole discussion and the way that you handled this. Thanks.
Okay, all right, with no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to action items. All right, we're going to lay a numbered line in the approval of February 8th.
Yep, we're on it. All right, you got me off guard. We're in deep discussion now. Motion to approve claims of
Nate, I'm sorry, one more time.
Motion to approve 620,503.38.
Thank you.
All right, the motion by Kenny, is it a second?
Second.
Second by member Hines, a discussion about that.
The only discussion I want to have, and I know that this was brought up by member Hines prior, and we had a lot of discussion on that with Kathy and everything. But I started going through some of this stuff now that I'm in this position and just trying to dissect some of this. Does anybody here on the board know how much we spend on credit cards on the in this school district alone? On average?
Yep.
I know you do.
Yep, I tackled that.
You know, I went back a few months. On average, it's about $10,000 or more dollars a month in credit cards. It is unreal. I just wanted to get that out there. So everybody could hear it. It is unreal. I can't believe that.
And I guess what's the reason for that? Is there certain purchases that have to be made on the credit card, or what are we?
Because there's two. There's the Spire card and there's the Amazon card, and it's just.
Well, what I'm getting at is if if we have to pay for it with a credit card.
No, and that's perfectly fine. I'm not I'm not disputing the purchases. I'm having a conversation about how much we spend outside of our whatever we're budgeted already.
So when I looked into this before, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, we have the Spire card, the Walmart card, and the Amazon card. The Walmart card is tax-free. Is that right?
And I didn't even get into the Walmart card.
And then some.
I guess I missed that one.
We also have the Sam's Club card.
And the Sam's Club card, right?
That's a first tax.
So I guess it's more than that.
But that's the Walmart card and the Sam's Club card, there isn't as much spending as there is on the Spire card indefinitely. But the Spire card is a lot of your admin staff, right? So like you and the business office, food services, and like your heads of departments. And that really should be it, as far as I understood it. Correct, correct my.
That's that's.
Correct, okay. And so they're buying stuff to supply for their departments. And there's a bucket of receipts that you can go through in the business office and look at everything that they're purchasing, if you would like, to really look in and see what they're spending their money on or spending that money on. There's receipts for every there's receipts for.
Well, there has to be.
I asked the question, but looked, I've seen it. It's crazy. It's crazy, and it.
Mrs. Davis, how much did you spend on the credit card picking up textbooks from from?
Oh, that's usually about $4,000 or $5,000 each semester. And so I think we finally have it figured out to where it, yeah, it's different. And that's also why, when you're doing it, you sometimes see that I'm getting checks for that too. But that's because I hit the Spire limit on that one, and then I have to use my own personal.
Oh, boy.
To pay for it, yeah.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah, that day is usually kind of a good day.
Really?
But we happen in connection with Pine Tech because we want them to invoice us.
Yeah, so we're going to work it a little bit differently, but otherwise, yeah.
That was a strong neck you had there, moly and moly.
Well, Spire is right across the parking lot, so the one time I did have to run over to get cash, but it worked.
And the one reason I brought that up is it was actually brought up in officers' training. It was actually a pretty hot topic about what about how certain districts handle their credit card usage, what they do, how many people have a credit card, the process for credit cards. And it was actually a pretty interesting process, and I was I just take a significant amount of notes on that, and I found, you know, then I start looking through what we have. And like I said, I'm not attacking anybody on what you need things. I understand that. I'm not attacking that. I just want to bring it up as a conversation so everybody's aware of what's going on here.
Yeah, and in the past, you know, like 15, 20 years ago, you had to do a lot of purchase orders and a lot of invoices. And so you would sometimes have to wait a long time before you would actually get the product.
Correct.
And now, because we can order it online, use the Spire card, and then you just get it a lot faster, so.
But Amazon has to be approved. And if I'm not mistaken, you approve those?
I so it's way better now than it used to be because you're right, a lot of staff are using credit cards through our through Amazon. So I set it up to be the business account where we don't have it, we're tax exempt. And we are now invoicing. We've done that for maybe less than a year. So instead of everybody putting different credit cards in on their Amazon purchase, it's set up to ask for a purchase order number, so it's already been approved. And then Linda Spears gets an invoice every month showing all those purchases. Plus, she also or I will send through the purchase once they submit it.
So so who's the authorizing party then for purchases?
I mean, Linda's oh, the purchase orders are going to be Kathy's, and then.
So everything goes through Kathy's.
I know, every purchase every purchase order for the district, I have had my eyes on, and I record them in a binder, in a notebook. So I know what's what's being spent. And then I also can have it. That's where I can track to make sure that budgets are being fulfilled and not gone over. So when you say that we've got all these budgets in our in our district, and now we're using these credit cards, the credit cards are to pay for the items that are in the budget already.
Is that a mandate?
So you have a spreadsheet then put together somewhere that itemizes down where everything went.
We have we have that's tracked in our business office. And so there are there are copies of everything that was approved is in our computers, both Linda's and mine. And so once they the purchase order is approved, then it goes back to Linda and to the person who actually originated.
It gets billed to the department that came out of it.
That is correct. And so there's the expense number that has to be put on there by the employees as they are using the credit cards or using purchase orders so that they're they're actually tracking their own expenses. So at the beginning of the school year, everybody receives their budget in a in a manila folder, and they're supposed to be keeping track also as they are ordering things through the district.
So then they haven't Ryan Sue, I'm assuming, or you could look at that to see who's over so that you can communicate through or.
Each of our teachers? No, we don't. I don't see that on our teachers.
You go straight to them, then Kathy, and let them know that obviously they're getting close.
That's that's part of the business office too, to track that and to make sure that people aren't going over. And if they go over their budget, then we usually deduct it from their budget the following year to keep people comfortable.
So if the business office is tracking it, why do you also track it?
I just because I want to make sure that I know that that purchase order has come through me and to make sure that it's it's approved. And that's the way it's set up, that it has to be approved by somebody other than other than the actual business office employee. So it's that checks and balances. So it can't be just one person that's that's actually having the purchase orders going through them. It has to be, you know, more checks and balances.
Okay, and so where it's coming from the teachers, you don't want that going up to Ryan and Sue for them to approve those and then kick it to the business office?
They do they do approve some things that are going through their budget, and they both have their budgets. So they know, yeah, for their departments, they have like Sue has all of the 300 numbers because that's high school, and Ryan has all the 100.
Oh, but I don't see we don't see the individual. You know how they each get an individual budget? Yeah, we don't see.
I don't see those purchases.
So it does the teachers do come to you, you you guys approve it?
If it's got to come out of something other than their classroom or department budget.
And anything that's special ed must go through the administrators in order to make sure that the federal federal forms are filled out and approved ahead of time. So I just put the stamp on it after that work is done.
Okay, how much time do you spend on approving invoices and stuff or purchase purchase orders for people?
I don't know for sure.
Okay, I mean, do you do it every day?
No, I do not do it every day. I try to do it once a week.
Okay. Would you say like a half hour on average, or do you spend more than that?
Depends on the time of year, probably.
Yeah, depends on the time of year. So but that's that's the way it's always been done in our district, so basically inherited that. So it's part of the responsibility.
Thank you all for having this discussion.
All right, any other discussion on February claims? All right, we're down, we're going to do it all called vote. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Hines?
Aye.
Member Kings?
Aye.
Member Schroder?
Aye.
I will vote aye as well, vote the fastest I have in my team. All right, we're going to move on to action item number 10, student hearing recommendation. Get anything I need to read?
You could take it right from the February 9th, excuse me, the February 21st minutes. Basically, just summarizing what's the white.
So you first? Who do you want to read that?
Arrow down. Arrow, arrow. Should we start with where it says student hearing?
Sure, you could.
All right, student hearing, Sue Davis and Kathy Belshine provided evidence pertaining to an incident that happened at school grounds, February 3rd, 2023. Discussion followed. Recommendation by school board is to proceed with expulsion of the students.
Sumo.
Motion by member Kings, can I get a second? Second. Second by member Schroder. Discussion? We already had that at the hearing, so. All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, action item 11, resolution directing the administration to recommend staff and programming needs or reductions and reasons therefore.
Whereas staffing and program needs are to be evaluated, whereas there continues to be concern regarding student enrollment, and whereas a determination must be made as to which program positions should be altered, expanded, or reduced, be resolved by the school of school board of independent school district number 333 as follows. That school board hereby directs superintendent of schools and administration to consider the expansion or discontinuance of programs or positions to perpetuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, and as a result of its moment concern, make recommendations to the school board for the expansion of programs, curtailment of programs, positions needed, or reduction of positions.
All right, motion by member Peterson, the second?
Second.
Second by a member Hines, discussion on that. They approved the same resolution last year.
You do this every year, and it's just making sure that our administration team is looking at programming and bringing recommendations to you of of what needs to be altered, what needs to be expanded, what needs to be reduced.
All right. Well, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes unanimously. All right, action item 12, motion to approve the four-day school week structure for 2023, '24 and 2024, '25 school years. Appeal discussion with Minnesota Department of Education.
So.
Motion by member Hines, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Peterson, discussion on that.
So I I do have a question.
Yep.
So last time we went through this, it was just for one school year, correct? It was for three. Okay.
But they only approved.
We originally applied for three years. They approved us for one.
Okay.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but that's why you have both the next two school years.
Correct.
Okay.
There will be the two years remaining.
Yeah.
And so you're is this where you're asking us to go down and appeal this with Minnesota Department of Education?
No, permission to or directive to actually have those conversations with the Department of Education.
Which discussion?
Telephone discussion.
But where you're asking to not have to apply again this year, or you're asking what what is?
She's asking us to approve this so that way we can continue on with having the discussions with MDE about having a four-day school structure here for the next two years to complete our three-year cycle.
Or if we need to go through the application process because
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Because the rationale that they gave in our letter did not come to fruition. They they believed that because our literacy, our reading scores needed to be improved. Well, our reading scores were improved, so they were making a determination on data that they hadn't seen yet.
Why would they approve the four-day school week without reviewing that data ahead of time?
They couldn't because the review came the review came to us. The application was due by April 1st, and the testing results don't come until June.
Do you have what our MCA scores were at the time of the application versus what they were in June?
Yes, and that was that was all shared with you through that documentation that shows our trending data over the years.
Last summer, but you didn't give it to us today?
Just fall.
This fall?
Yes.
But you didn't give it to us today?
No, not today. I gave you all that that the trending data, just like the teachers received at the beginning of the school year. And that was also part of our World's Best Workforce data that was shared with you also. So basically, I've held off because because I felt like you didn't want me to be having conversations on behalf of the district with MDE. And so and so.
So basically, I mean, you're going to have that discussion before you go through the whole application process.
I'd like to finish it. I did have a call out, and there has been no response. So I would like to make that call to see if the same person that I had the conversation with after we received our letter is the person I'm trying to reach out to to see if because she was. because she was part of the review team of our schools for day school week. If there's any opportunity for us, for them to go back and just review that.
So basically review it and approve it.
If that's, if that can be done.
I mean, that's basically with any of it. Make it so we don't have to.
Because we were the only school district out of the other, what was there, eight or six or eight, six degrees?
I think there's six.
Something like that, and we were the only one that actually was unapproved for the entire time, correct?
I believe so.
I would like to see how much our increase was though.
I, I have that data now.
Thank you.
So at our high school level in two thousand twenty-one, our reading proficiency percentage was thirty-two point one. And in twenty twenty-two, our high school reading proficiency was forty-three point five percent. And then in the elementary, twenty twenty-one, reading proficiency is forty point two percent. And twenty twenty-two, fifty point three percent.
Okay. And what's, do we know what the state average is for these scores?
Yeah. Do you have that on that sheet also?
Um, hmm, it's probably here, but.
If you have it, I'm only interested in twenty twenty-two really.
Are you on the slides?
I'm just on, in the report card.
So I have it, but the only hesitancy is I don't want to go into my other files because of this being a public meeting.
Oh.
And so, um, I don't want to go into my drive where some of my other files would be viewed.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Does the fast testing give us an indication of how we're gonna do? Like our fast testing from the fall, does that give us, or the winter? We do, we don't do winter, do we?
We do the winter, yeah.
Does that give us an indication of how well we might do on the M C As in the spring?
Yes.
And are we trending to continue to improve? Do you think, do, do the fast testing show us that?
Uh, I haven't run those numbers yet.
Okay.
Which score did you wanna see for twenty-two?
I'm just curious what the state average is for the high school and elementary for the same number for the reading and the math. I think is what you gave us or did you, no, you only gave us reading, so only for the reading, if we have it handy.
Okay, that's this. That's showing the side score, hold on here.
Did you have to ask such a difficult question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm looking through my emails.
So for twenty twenty-two, the state for math, or you want reading?
Just reading, yeah.
Uh, fifty-one point one.
And that's high school or that's?
District-wide.
District-wide, okay.
Thank you. We did have two grade levels. I remember that did surpass the, um, the, um, state proficiency, proficiency rate. I believe it was third grade at like seventy-four percent. And then, um, tenth grade, tenth grade at forty-some. Is it? Yeah, tenth grade, so it was, it was two grade levels. Thank you.
All right, uh, any other discussion on, uh, what's going on with four-day school week?
So then what, uh, so what's your next process then with this? What are you gonna do? Uh, I mean, you said you're gonna have a discussion with M D E. When's that gonna take place? Do we need to be a part of it? Does the school board need to talk to them? Do we, uh, put this all on your hands? What's the process for this?
It's just a conversation with one of the assistant commissioners that had already had that dialogue with me, um, last spring. And, um, and then just to see if that's a possibility. If it's not a possibility, then we move forward. And we're bringing it, um, to you because thinking that, okay, when it was approved last year, it was approved for three years. And so basically, I would think that we would want to go for the other two years because all of the survey results would show and had shown that we wanted three years. And so it's basically, um, just having you endorse that we should go finish what we applied for, um, for those other two years. And so one other step, um, at the meet and confer meeting, we had asked that, um, that our teachers give us some kind of, you know, indication of where they're at with, um, four-day school week. Because if they're our experts in the classrooms and, and so if it's changed dramatically with them, then we should maybe rethink it. So I do have, um, for you, this is the, the results. So the first question was, do you support continuing the four-day school week structure into the next two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year? There were thirty-three responses. Sixty-nine point seven percent is the blue yes. Uh, we have a very small sliver, it doesn't even show up on the, the pie graph, but it's twenty-seven point three percent maybe. The next question was, do you believe the four-day school week, um, structure helps us to obtain and retain teachers? And that is showing, again, that same sixty-nine, sixty-nine point seven percent, um, yes. Um, nine point one percent no and twenty-one point two percent maybe. And then, um, was, is the four-day school week structure a reason for you personally to be teaching at openly public schools? Sixty-six point seven percent say yes, thirty-three point three percent say no.
And this survey was conducted with elementary and high school?
All of our teachers. And then I had shared with you, um, both in paper form and then also, um, the actual comments because sometimes, you know, comments can say so much more. But I thought that it would, you know, basically for you to have those comments rather than for us to go through every single one, um, at the meeting tonight.
Oh, so that's what this is? This isn't like an email from a teacher that was just a big?
That is, that's each of the comments that people chose, and that was optional, um, for, that chose to write some comment, um, with, with this. Just a quick inquiry, um, survey.
Okay.
To help with the decision-making tonight.
So are we? Okay, thank you. Oh, that was the question I was gonna ask. I'm sorry, one more, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Um, if you, okay, so calling and, and asking for all of this, and if they say no, they want you to resubmit an application. As far as I understand, the application was due April first last year, so I assume it's same timeframe.
It's, it's due April third this year because of the, because April first is on the weekend.
Oh, sure.
April third.
And does this give you, so let's say that it takes you two weeks to get in contact with somebody and get some kind of an answer. Is that gonna give you enough time if they say no and we have to reapply to complete an application and get your other job duties done?
It's always been expected in the past.
But you've had a significant amount of time to complete that application before. So are you, can you reuse some of the information from before?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's what we do. And, and I had shared, um, with our admin team, um, you know, especially with, with the data piece and whatnot as far as like, um, our achievements, that I, I'm going to ask that, um, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Koenig's, um, um, help with that. Um, review it, see if they think we should be putting in some other, um, information that would, um, be pertinent to the, the state looking at our school district for continuing with four-day school week.
Thank you.
And, and they will most likely want three public meetings. But just like we've done before, um, we will schedule them, you know, on our, on our school board meeting night. We'll schedule, um, you know, on a, we usually go three different, um, days of the week to try to get, um, it covered. And I think you all realize from our past experience that very few people come. So that would be one of those questions I would ask also is, um, the survey results from last year, you know, I don't think they're going to change at all from one year to the next. And again, they were approving three years and that's what, um, what, what people were gauging their, their responses on. So it's going to be, it's going to be important to have that discussion with the M D E person, um, just to see where we're at and then we, we move forward.
So we have to have three meetings between now and April first if you have to submit that application?
Maybe.
So how come we didn't ask to have this discussion sooner? So we had a little bit more time to plan for three meetings that we might have to have in the next couple of weeks.
If you looked at last year, it was basically the same, same structure. The first meeting was at this February meeting last year. So it's not that we're really far off from how we, how we have done the, um, the actual process of the public meetings as we did in the past. It'll be fine.
I don't disagree with you. I just feel stressed thinking about this. And I also think like, we have tons of stuff going on in our schedule. The community has tons of things going on in their schedule. You have tons of things going on in your schedule and we have like a couple of weeks to figure out what you're gonna do.
I get where you're coming from because you have all the referendum and everything else. We have extra building projects and it seems like a lot.
Yeah, it's, it, that's all. I'm, it's just like, if we have to, if, if it's a big, we have to put those three together. It, it would have been nice if we could have spread it out over a little bit more time with all the other meetings plus our personalized life activities that we have.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Thank you.
All right, uh, with that, go to both. All those in favor say aye.
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 Four ayes and one opposed. Motion passes. All right, item number thirteen. Motion to approve, uh, enrollment numbers.
Four hundred ninety-four. Um, down from four hundred ninety-eight last month. Um, our elementary, um, is down three and the high school down one of, of those numbers.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the enrollment numbers that Kathy just presented? Sumo. Kings, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Peterson. All right, discussion on that.
I have one thing. Uh, have we done any of these exit interviews that we talked about yet?
Yes.
For students? No.
Yes.
Do we, are we compiling that information or no?
Yes.
We will get a report on that then at some point in time or?
It hasn't been a formal report in, in the past.
It would be nice just to find out as to.
I will share with you.
Reasoning.
Yeah. I will share with you, um, the, the other, the other sheet that goes with this that has the notes from our two, um, secretaries. And I don't know if our principals want to mention anything, um.
I just think that it would possibly help in determining other issues throughout noted over the same line why students come and go.
Do we have any students that moved out of district this last, during this last month?
What grade is the high school on?
The high school, um, we gained one seventh grader, lost two tenth graders.
Okay. I know one of the tenth graders, they were open enrolled here and went back. But, um, two of them.
And in the elementary, um, we, we lost a kindergartner, gained a first grader, lost a third grader, lost a fourth grader, and lost a fifth grader, third, fourth grader. And I believe there was one family with two or three children that had decided to homeschool.
Yes. Um, yep, everyone except for one of those is enrolled in homeschool now.
Which one?
In, in the elementary, there's.
There's only one student actually left, well.
Yeah.
Went to a different district.
One of them went to a different district.
Sixth grade, but I, I didn't catch all of that.
Um, so we had, we had a third grader move to a different school district and the rest are returning to homeschool.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on enrollment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item fourteen, uh, motion to approve job descriptions of the ground supervisor, grade seven through twelve, school counselor and staff development co-coordinator. Sumo. Motion by member Kings, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Schroder. Any discussion on that? They're all ready now. They all look good. All right, with that, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item number sixteen. Motion to approve, uh, the donations of Oakley Lions Club, four thousand seven hundred. And of that, uh, thirteen hundred and thirty was for dugout benches. And Lady Lions decorative fence for four hundred and forty and football sideline caves for two thousand nine hundred and thirty. I get a motion to approve that.
So?
Motion by member Heinz, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Peterson.
Mr. Chair, if I could please interject, the dugout benches are six hundred sixty-five dollars instead of the thirteen hundred and thirty. Um, there is a, a little bit of discrepancy with the information that I received.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number for the dugout benches?
It's six hundred sixty-five dollars. And then the lady lions, um, that, that, that is correct. And then basically the balance is going to be used for, um, for the, the caves.
Just for the team, uh, that played this month?
On the sidelines, you know, yeah.
Basically, the total is still forty-seven.
Pardon me? The total is, the total is exactly correct. Thank you.
All right. All right, well, thank you Lions Club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like always. All right, uh, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, non-action items. Item fifteen, boys' school calendar draft for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, um, I've given you a, a paper copy and the only thing that's missing from this particular paper copy is the, um, the midterms and the end of the quarter. And that will be, I will send you that copy with, with the extra information and that's the, the actual information that's gonna be posted in the teacher's lounge. And so the calendar looks almost identical to last year's. So the number of days in the quarters, the numbers of days in the semesters are exactly the same. Um, the only, and the only thing that was really funky on the copy that you received, if you'll notice, you have nothing in March, on for March third. And if you look up at the screen, March third is where that other conference date is. And that one is going to be up for discussion, um, because.
Fourth, not the third.
Okay, I'm sorry, the fourth. Yeah, so, so it's going to be up for discussion because of, um, wanting to see if we go with another showcase or if we go back to traditional with Thursday night, Friday morning. Right now, the, the fall conferences, the sixteenth and seventeenth of November are with that structure of it being Thursday night, Friday morning with, you know, the individual conferences with teachers. So the third is going to be, um, excuse me, the fourth of March will be, um, I'm sure discussed by staff as they give us some input, um, with this, with this schedule. Um, but again, almost everything else is identical. We will have, um, possibly one day, and that would be, um, the thirty, the thirty, um, the thirtieth. The thirtieth, if it's, if we go with a showcase day, then the thirtieth would be an extra day. Um, as we have in our calendar this year, um, students come back after Memorial Day for, um, Tuesday, Wednesday. So this calendar could look exactly the same way, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the last student day, um, would be that Wednesday. Um, it means then that we could put an extra day of, um, vacation time could be around the, the holiday. Um, it means then that we could put an extra day of, um, vacation time, could be around the, the holiday. Um, it could be, I, I, that's, I believe where we would, where we'd put it, to be honest, would be, um, creating maybe an extra day at, um, Easter time for a little bit longer spring break or putting it with our winter break, um, around the holiday. If it stays, um, if we go back to the traditional, then the calendar, the last student contact day would be the thirtieth. The teachers would come in on the thirty-first and graduation would be on that Friday, the thirty-first.
Can I ask something?
Mm-hmm.
Why would we go forward for that Monday on March, in March and not a Friday?
Or even that Thursday.
I'm just throwing that out, why?
For like that showcase, why not on a Monday and not a Thursday?
It seems like it would fit better on the seventh, that Thursday.
Anything towards the end of the week is they have to take all of that stuff home afterwards. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, almost.
So we could, I mean.
I'm just throwing that out.
Would, would you like me to place that then over on the seventh?
Towards the end of the week than the beginning of the week.
I think the seventh, that would, that would go together like it always does where you have the day off after the end of the term and.
As long as it works out with the semesters and quarters and how many days.
I don't know. You guys deal with it, not us.
And just.
It just makes more sense to have it on an annual week in the beginning.
And, and just so you know, we've gone with that structure before where we had it on Monday, on a non-school Monday and gone with eleven, but we've tried all different structures to.
Because people utilize that just like they did, um, last week or whatever. They utilize that as their spring break or, you know, they, they, you know, organize that because that's a, you know, four and a half, five-day situation for them. And then they can utilize that as their spring break rather than, you know, they really don't have much of a break for the Easter break anyway, so. Just a suggestion.
Yep, I got it. And, um, what's, what I'm doing right now is putting it in here. So on my copy then, on the fourth, we would have school Monday through, um, Thursday. Um, or it would be, it would depend, it depends on how we use that day.
Yep.
Okay, just, just so you know, if we go to traditional, then the calendar would be like you see up there with, um, the students being in school fourth through the seventh and the thirtieth would, would be at the last student contact day. And graduation and teacher in service would be the thirty-first.
Great. All right. All right, uh, item number sixteen, four-day school week update.
And just, I just wanted to let you know that, um, they've, um, the, the FLY, which this is what we're under is the FLY, it's called flexible learning year. So our four-day falls underneath there, schools that do forty-five, fifteen fall under the FLY. Um, student, teach, our schools that start before Labor Day fall underneath the FLY. So the FLY is, um, offering two, um, two webinars. And I did register for both those webinars, um, just to make sure that one of them is, that the question is, should you reapply for your FLY? Um, and I thought that would be good if I go to those webinars, find out, um, what the viewpoint of Minnesota Department of Education is in regarding, in regards to FLY districts. And the other one was on, is on SmartWalls.
Was it down by others?
I can't remember. It's, but it's, um, it's coming up like in this next week or two.
All right. All right, referendum projects update.
Just basically what I shared earlier, um, unless you have specific questions, um, about, about the referendum. You know, everything is, is moving forward. Mr. Kanix, did we already talk with the board about the, the playground being, um, yeah, kind of rescheduled or later?
I don't remember. So.
I can't hear anything right now.
That was it.
No, 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 okay. So our, our playground, um, speaking with, uh, hmm, not Miracle, Webrec. Um, and they said they're scheduled for delivery on the first week in September. He said currently their Miracle, which is the company they purchased the equipment through, is ahead of schedule on shipping. So we're hoping that it's earlier than that, but right now it's scheduled the week of September sixth.
Oh, boy. What are the kids gonna do with an empty playground?
We're great to be, to be very creative.
Go to the field.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Temporary outdoor classroom for fun. Obstacle courses, using the, the basketball hoops on the, on the, the tar, um, the driveway. Yeah. So yes, we're, we're working with that too. So that's, um, that's what's coming there. Um, and, and when I shared about the track, the surveyors came and then they also did that boring. Um, so I know that Paul was out there helping because they needed to be able to find, you know, um, they needed to be able to put holes in the track that wouldn't impact the track being able to be used. And so Paul knew exactly where he wanted to take them. So that was one of the things that happened the last couple of weeks. And then you heard about the pool and bleachers. We had a salesperson that came in, I believe it was last two, it was, um, last Tuesday. And so it's just at that very beginning stages of design and, um, the conversation of whether we have bleachers with backs. And if you have bleachers with backs, then you lose two rows of your bleachers because you have to have enough room for the, for the backs. And so, um, the salesperson also is wanting us to have twenty-six inches, um, of, you know, between the, the bleachers for having extra, extra room. One thing too, have you ever noticed that in our gym, there are more bleachers on the visitor's side than on our home site? There are nine banks of bleachers on the visitor's side and only eight banks on our, um, home site. And then besides that, the bleachers are shorter because on the home site, the doors, the doors take off, you know, and we have doors at both ends. So that door space on the other side are actual bleachers. So that's another question that, you know, should be asked. Do we want to switch our visitor and our home sites in order to be able to have more seating for our home guests?
Break out the paintbrushes.
Yep. And then, and then also there is a lot of discussion about, um, teams having chairs on the floor where instead of the athletes sitting in the bleachers on that first bleacher, they actually have chairs that are on the floor. And in order to do that, then you lose a, a couple of your bleachers because you have to have enough space between the, the line and where your bleachers start in order to put chairs. So, um, it was really a, a very good, very good discussion. Um, the, the one thing too that I was very pleased with though is we could have the railings that go up. The railings, um, would not have to have any, any, um, adjustments made with them. They would just automatically, um, turn as the bleachers are closed up, um, unless we go with backs. If we go with backs, then the bleachers, the hot, the actual railings have to have like a quarter inch turn, um, with a gizmo, um, before they can be, um, closed. So, um, that's, so we have, we have estimates that had first come in and I can certainly share those with you too that are both, um, both with backs and without having any backs. Anybody have preferences right now?
So is that full bleacher with backs or is it just certain sections?
First, first two rows usually.
They're nice.
What do the districts have around here?
Well, Hinkley's got a nice setup. So we just have a mountain of people. They have a really nice setup.
Yeah.
Most don't have.
No, there's, there's a lot of them that don't, but they're starting.
The older ones.
Yeah, right, right. So they are nice. They're, they're comfortable.
And the vendor that came in, um, did actually do Hinkley and Listen School, uh, also. So we were asking out of you about that comparison too. So, um, the referend, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, you had alluded to having another meeting about this referendum anyway. So would this be better discussed in that meeting?
That would be better discussed by, you know, um, although Injensa has had nothing to do with the bleachers at this point. And so.
But even still.
Yes. So I'll send you some dates, um, and we'll see if we can get that meeting, that informational meeting, um, scheduled for you. It wouldn't, you know, have any action items, but it would be keeping you in the loop and to, you know, give us some more ideas or validation of what's, the progress we're making.
And that is with Injensa?
That would be with Injensa, yes.
Jackie from it. Yeah, she's trying to just get more time with us, so we gotta figure that out.
Yeah.
No, I think.
I reached out to Injensa and they couldn't do March sixth, so we now need to give them some other dates.
So are we giving them dates then?
Yep.
Because which dates do you wanna give them?
I did ask them what would work too, but I'll just send you an email.
Get that from her inside, it's a little.
In the time.
All right. Item eighteen, alumni award recipient nomination.
Just to let you know that that, um, the nominations are due by the end of the month, end of March. And so please spread the word and yourselves included. If you have some alumni people that you really believe, um, you know, should be, um, being nominated, please do so. And our student school board members too, start talking out in the community. Um, if there are people that, that you'd like to have nominated, make sure that we, we get those nominations.
What do they do again then at the end of March?
At the last party in March. And that was also put out in our line tails, um, so hopefully, and, and, um, I'll be mentioning it on the radio as well.
All right, uh, Spire Credit Union Authorization Updated Forms.
You notice the tabs, so after the meeting, um, if you could please stick around, then we would make sure that, um, the signatures would be on this new packet.
Well, what's new with the packet? We already signed them. Did we miss something when we signed them in January? Cause we already did that, didn't we?
We have a new business manager.
Oh.
And I asked if we could just have that section done and, um, Spire's, um, procedures are, you, um, well, hey, you know what though? It looks like they've got some of the same ones in here, so.
And so when we redo the payroll position, you're gonna be redoing those docs again then?
I don't believe the payroll person ever goes over to the bank with stuff.
No, okay.
I don't think so. I think it is.
Okay, well.
I don't, no, I, I'm pretty sure it's, does not include, um, the payroll person.
All right, so we'll sign them after the meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have another? All right, no others. How about a motion for twenty-one?
Motion to adjourn at eight fifteen.
Motion by member, uh, second. Any second by Schroder. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name's adjourned.